Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 24th, 2025 meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There's a sign up sheet in the foyer in case anyone attending the meeting would like to gather information that would need to be sent to you. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made should be done into a microphone so it can be part of the record. On our agenda this evening after review and approval of the March 17 minutes, we have a discussion, St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission's FY 2026 to FY 2031 Capital Improvement Plan and Budget, followed by update of the Comprehensive Plan by Land Use and Growth Management Director, and then if no other, new business adjournment. At this time, we'll have the board members, starting with Ms. Delahay, introduce themselves.
Good evening. Lynn Delahay.
Patty Robrecht.
Joe St. Clair.
Joe Van Kirk.
Jake Kuzinow.
Good evening. Connor Lockren.
Did everyone have a chance to look at the March 17 minutes? If so, take a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from March 17 meeting?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Courtney, what's going first? Is it just like it is on the agenda?
Sir.
Okay. All right. We'll have Metropolitan Commission up first. Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna introduce some staff. Let me do that real quick.
Okay.
I haven't done this for a couple of years. In the audience this evening, we have Jessica Andrich, the Director of Land Use and Growth Management. Courtney Jenkins, she's Deputy Director of Land Use and Growth Management. Megan Higgs-Carter is a Senior Planning Specialist. From the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, we have Mr. George Erickson, their Executive Director, and we have Kristi Hollander, Chief Engineer still.
Yes, sir.
And from other county staff, we have John Sterling-Houser, he's Deputy County Attorney. And behind the glass running the meeting is Amy Carter, a Video Media Producer. All right. Thank you. Was that the baton handed off? Well, welcome, especially new members. Gerald Kuzinow, Connor, I'm gonna mess up your last name, so Commissioner Connor, welcome. And any other new members? No other new members? Lynn Delahay, I know you've expressed an interest at seeing some of our facilities. To the balance of the commission, please feel free to reach out to us. We've got three large facilities. One is Marley Taylor, our largest wastewater treatment plant. The Hickory Hills Water Tower is our largest water tower. And we also have our Great Mills Wastewater Pump Station, which is very new and state of the art that we'd like to tour you through anytime. Just reach out to Kristi, myself, Ann, when she's here. Anybody at our office will be glad to tour you through the facilities. Come in the spring. Don't come in the summer. It's just, there's reasons. Come in the spring, not the summer. As stated in our transmit a letter to you, I think it's dated March 6th, we've divided our projects into two different categories. Obviously, we're the Metropolitan Commission. We do water and sewer, so the projects are divided into two sections. On the water side, we have well projects, water storage tank projects, and miscellaneous projects. On the sewer side, we have rehabilitation and repair, pump stations, sewer upgrades and expansions. As far as scheduling goes, we work through three different iterations of the capital budget with our board through November and December. We have a hearing scheduled on April 15th. It's tentatively scheduled. From a procedural standpoint, we have our authority from Chapter 113, which is the code of St. Mary's County. You all are an integral part. The county commissioners have to approve our budget, but only after your review for conformance with the St. Mary's County Comprehensive Plan. Kristi's here to discuss some specific projects. The short version is, there are no surprises this year from last year. It's simply a rollover of those existing projects and projects from out years coming forward. However, there are four areas, I think, from a planning commission standpoint, you'd be interested in and that we've been talking about over the past year. The first one is St. Clement Shores. You know all about the treatment plant there. There was a health issue in St. Clement Shores. A hundred and, I think it was 140 existing homes, our potential failing systems. The county commissioners went through an arduous process. It took about a year and a half to go through all the public processes and the state approvals to develop a service area for St. Clement Shores. The new expansion, sewer expansion, will serve approximately 320 EDUs. The plant itself is going to be in excess of $20 million. And because we are expanding that using E and R technology, which is enhanced nutrient removal technology, which removes almost all the nitrogen, we were able to obtain a $10.2 million grant from the state. That sounds good. We were eligible for 15, but administratively, they cap this type of project at 10. But we got 10.2. So that's good. The plant is due to be bid this calendar year, during this calendar year. And what you'll notice in the capital improvement project, if you're looking closely, is, because you may not see it, is about $2.7 million in our out years added to expand the sewer into the sub-areas within the service area. So it's one thing to upgrade the plant, but if you can't connect to the plant, you haven't really done anything. So we're upgrading all of our lines to lower the cost to the existing customer base there, so that when they tie in using Bay Restoration Funds as well, the cost to them won't be as great. So we've added about 3.5 million last year of Metropolitan Commission funds to extend and upgrade the lines that, I'll call them the trunk lines, that extend out into these areas. And then we've added over $2.5 million in, I think, 28 and 29, to begin the process of the residential hookups that will be taxing districts. And by taxing districts, we mean they will pay us back over a period of 20 to 30 years. But you have to have the authority and you have to incur the debt in order to get paid back. Even though it's a special taxing district and the source of the revenue is there, we still have to show it as debt. So that's one project. The second one is the EDU Transfer Program. And for the geezers on the Planning Commission, Mr. St. Clair and Mr. Van Kirk, you've heard about this. I know Patricia, you're fully aware of the EDU Transfer Program. We went through a long process there. And over this past year, it ended up being codified, thanks to the work of Jessica, into a standard operating procedure. And I think that was last August. That allows people to transfer EDUs sewer only. There's no need for this program to extend it into water. So if Joe Van Kirk is in one area served by Marley Taylor and Mr. St. Clair is in another area and he has EDUs that he can't use, you used to have to relinquish them or rescind them and put them into a pool. Now, we have the private sector being able to negotiate back and forth because they do have some inherent value. Mr. Van Kirk's been paying for his EDU for years. He just doesn't need it. So it has development potential. Mr. St. Clair can't get any. And this provides an open market for development. And we think it's a really great thing. We probably haven't had any takers yet.
Not yet.
But it will be something that you'll see in the future, especially when the plants get closer and closer to reaching their capacity. As long as there's capacity available, it's not really an issue. But we have several wastewater treatment plants that are at capacity. And there are EDUs out there that are not connected that are sellable. So that program should take off here in the next six months or a year, we hope.
And that's still managed by Lugum?
Land Use and Growth Management and us collectively.
Okay.
But the final sign off is with Land Use and Growth Management.
Okay. George, since you talked about St. Clement Shores, you want to go through your program or can we ask you a couple of questions before you?
However you want to do it.
Okay. Let me ask you a couple of questions. You mentioned the Bay Restoration Funds in a taxing district. Will that, will the Bay Restoration Funds only cover a portion of if a person needs to connect 50 feet or 100 feet or what's the cap?
I always get here to talk about programs that other people administer. So the Health Department administers the distribution of Bay Restoration Funds. I think individual homeowners are eligible, depending on their level of income, because it's income based, of up to $20,000 per lot. The change from last year is that individuals on a street can pool those resources together to create service for their entire street. That's a little bit of a change. It used to be just individual connections. So hopefully, this will allow a portion. And it all depends on how long the street is, right? A 50-foot-long street with 30 customers is different than a two-mile street with only eight.
Sure.
So I can't answer you. In some cases, it'll cover the majority. In some cases, it won't touch the cost.
Your taxing district that you're talking about, is that only going to affect the 140 possible existing failures? Or is it gonna be for the whole St. Clement Shores?
It will be for the entire St. Clement Shores.
Okay.
Is that just limited down to Lady Baltimore Avenue? Or will it come out on Bayside?
It does a portion. There's a large service area you can see for that treatment plant that includes parts of Breton Bay, St. Clement Shores proper, Rose Bank area, all down Rose Bank Road.
So it goes in that direction, not the other direction?
No, it doesn't go too much further past the intersection with Bayside.
It's Lady Baltimore.
And from a planning perspective, we're working with the county's GIS. One of the things that we did, because we knew these types of questions would start coming up, and we have an EDU Transfer Program, is we're going to put the service areas for all the wastewater treatment plants on the county's GIS. Right now, if you go onto the county's GIS mapping site, the St. Clement Shores District is on there. And you can zoom in and see which lots, and you can zoom in to see the roads, you can zoom in to see the topography. So that is on there. We hope to do that for Marley Taylor, Chopticon, every single wastewater treatment plant we have. I think we have eight now. So that, on the planning side, people will know what areas are intended to be served. Because right now, it's not mapped anywhere.
What's the timeframe of completion? You said bid later this year? What does it take? Couple of years, a year?
It's a two-year construction duration. So we're hoping to get it out soon, within the next few months. So in two years from now, hopefully, we'll be pretty close to having it done.
Okay. Now, the St. Clement's area was done as a priority funding, if I remember. It was kept the same as what we seen a couple of years ago? It wasn't expanded? I know some people had tried to get it expanded to cover more Breton Bay and stuff, but was it kept the same?
The 140 people are the ones that are eligible for Bay Restoration Funds because of that designation. If you're undeveloped at this time, you're not eligible.
Okay.
You're not eligible. And if you looked at our Capital Budget Improvement Program sheet, you'll see they're divided into two sections. The trunk lines that we talked about, Metcom funding, are 28 and 29. And the reason the timing is there is after the treatment plan is completed, then we'll build the trunk lines. And then after that, we have a designation called subarea. There are about 20 different sub-areas in St. Clement Shores that'll be served. We're just showing the most expensive one now, because we don't expect everyone to want to hook up at the same time. The inventory of problem sewer areas, I think we've been discussing that every year since I've been before you, in the county's Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, there are identified areas. I think there are 20 different areas throughout the county that are problem sewer areas, because they either don't perk, they have high water table, or they're in presence of a lot of existing failing systems. We have also worked with the county's GIS there. And these problem water and sewer areas are on GIS maps, on the county's GIS. It's nice to see where those areas are. These areas impact about 2,800 improved lots and about 2,200 unimproved properties. So you see why we have an interest. That's 5,000, a net of 5,000 customers. They are in remote areas. They will require special attention. And I think as part of the Comprehensive Plan, there's going to be some language introduced there. And when we go through the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, there'll be some additional verbiage in there. Our big concern is that as these communities develop, there may be no vacant land available to build what we call packaged treatment plants to serve them. They're too remote to extend water and sewer, so they'll have to have their own treatment facility like the Veterans Home in Charlotte Hall. So go by there if you want to see what we're talking about. But if you've got two residential lots close together and one small quarter-acre lot in between, we're not putting a packaged treatment plant there. But if you continue, and I say you, not Planning Commission, it's the generic you, continue to let these developments grow and don't get in there and purchase land available for these packaged plants, there's going to be problems, because the package plant won't be able to be close enough to the community, and it'll be just as cost prohibitive. So what we hope to do in the next phase of planning is try to find lots where these are feasible to place and work with the county to try to purchase those. These areas are in no-plan service areas. What no-plan service means is, we don't want water and we don't want sewer in these areas. So Metcom can't really take the lead with purchasing property, but we can certainly help identify it and maybe work with the county to do 50/50. But we know that sometime in the future, the Health Department will be sitting here, the county commissioners will be sitting there, and the Planning Department and the Metropolitan Department will be sitting here, and we'll be told, make it happen. And we don't want it to be too late. We want to do the planning that's needed and the land purchase that's needed now. No different than FDR Boulevard. If you had designed it and purchased the right-of-way years ago, the construction may have gone a little faster. You'd still have to do the permitting, but the construction might have gone a little faster. And that's where we want to be. When you're gone and we're gone, from our positions, we don't want to say who was in charge when they could have addressed this. We want to be on the forefront. So that's our input on inventory of problem sewer areas. The last thing is the YMCA. Whether you're pro YMCA or non YMCA excitable, we worked with the county on the permitting for the facility. And in particular, Kristi was able to get with another developer who was upgrading the pumps at our pump station. And because they were, I don't want to say over-upgrading, but they were, because they over-upgraded, we were able to put that developer in contact with the YMCA to get adequate facilities addressed in zoning ordinance without the YMCA having to foot that cost. So that was a nice little partnership. The county was really pushing that Y hard, and there was an adequate public facilities problem. And our staff was able to put two folks together and get that resolved. So kudos to Kristi and her staff. Those were kind of related, capital-related, but not specifically for why we were here tonight. I just thought you would be interested. And Kristi will now take the floor. And there's probably five or six projects on the water side, and five or six on the sewer side, we just want to highlight for you tonight.
Good evening. So as George mentioned, the binders you guys have are split into two sections, water and sewer, with subcategories under each that he ran through real quick. Like you said, I'm gonna go through and just highlight a few projects we have going on. Please stop me if you have questions as we go, or if you think of something later, just ask. All right. So into the water, we're gonna continue our proactive rehab and renewal program that goes in and replace old saddles, areas we have problems with valves, old smaller lines, replace fire hydrants, things like that, kind of smaller projects, to keep everything in good condition. Maryland Route 5, the widening, was a state highway project. We deferred that out to 2028 due to the state actually removing funding. So that may be moved out again next year, depending on where their funding ends up. We included MD 247 level road, so that's phase, that'll be phase three of our King Kennedy project. That's replacing all the water mains in that older subdivision. That'll be our last phase of that project. So that whole subdivision will have new well and all new mains, fire hydrants, house connections, meters. We're continuing our well rehab and replacement program. We're looking to put a new replacement well in Wycomico Shores. That will be done in FY 26. So that's a replacement well. We had an old well that went bad up there. We're continuing to move forward with the Piney Point Water Station upgrade. We added about $1.4 million to finish the balance of the construction budget to this year's budget. We're continuing the Southampton Water Project. That is a joint project with the county where they're going in, similar to Petuxent Park, if you're familiar, where they replaced all the roads and sidewalks. And we're coming through and replacing all the water and sewer as well. And then we're continuing our generator replacement program. That's the same for both water and sewer. We replace about two generators a year, and we have approximately 92 generators in our system that we maintain. And then we also added our first phase of our advanced metering project. So that'll allow us to, similar to SMECO, not have to send people out to read meters. It will run through our network of antennas to get back to our office. So we'll have more up-to-date ability to read meters quickly. And that's what I have for water. Anybody have any questions before we move on to sewer?
First, I had a couple.
Sure.
Just looking at the first few pages of the water, where you have highlighted in yellow.
Mm-hmm.
And it says that's a change from the 2025. Is all them marks just because cost of doing business has gone up, or?
Yes, sir.
The project has increased or decreased?
The cost, we received updated cost estimates for those, for replacement wells, and they've gone up.
Okay.
And if you are on, you're on the water line sheet?
Yes.
So on the first sheet, the first highlight, the SHA deferred their project to 2028, so we highlighted it. That wasn't a cost change per se. The second one, in 2026, we did update the estimate. The prior estimate was 4.17 million, and it went up to 5.2. But the third highlighted one, which is the Southampton Water System, was 2.129 million, and now it's 2.120. That estimate actually went down. So it just indicates a change.
So at the end, the summary at the total is what it went up, what the difference is. The bottom, like, the first sheet, it says 1,005,90. So all the yellows indicate the extra cost of everything is a million and a half from what it was in 2025.
So the change, when in 2025, we projected 2026. Now that it's in 2026, that number represents the difference from what we projected. So it's a million and a half less than what we told you we would do in 2026, because the SHA project moved.
Okay.
Basically. So that's just the delta from what you saw last year.
Okay. Understand.
And overall, if you go to the third sheet, you'll see the summation of all of the changes.
Which is 7.2?
Yes, 7.2.
Okay. All right.
And the changes on the second sheet, under wells. Wycomico Shores, we were hoping we could drill the new well in the same aquifer, which was a shallow aquifer. Not the case. Any new well now has to be put in the Patapsco, which is significantly deeper. So our $400,000 project is now well over a million.
Wow.
So that's primarily the reason that changed. And on the third page of water, the cost of generators, as Kristi pointed out, has increased. On the vehicle maintenance side, we simply consolidated two years into one. Why buy one truck in FY 28 and 1 and 29 when you can purchase them both together? And the other one is our AMR to AMI technology. We simply just advanced the funding. We found out we could do it significantly less than what we thought. So we had some planning money in the out year, and now we can actually do some purchases.
Good.
We'll be more like SMECO, but we won't be SMECO. Our information is typically over a month behind. We read, we read all the meters in one month, and then we bill you for the prior month. And it's sometimes confusing. SMECO bills you for that last month. If we can get this AMI technology in place, we'll be able to bill in real time. And customers will actually be able to put notifications on and receive text messages when their water use gets above a certain level. It's gonna be pretty neat.
Yeah.
If we can pull it off. But it's significantly cheaper than the infrastructure when it first came out. We're able to put, I forget what they're called, gateway?
Gateways.
They're called gateways. For $50,000, they can be put on top of our water towers. They basically cast a wavelength or a band, which our meters can pick up. It's pretty neat.
The current meters that you already have?
The current meters we already have are drive-by. They're proximity.
Right.
But we made sure the antennas have proximity of a much larger distance. So when this gets put in place, we'll be in great shape.
Good.
Yeah, it worked out.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah.
So it's a time saver for our meter techs, too.
That will also help with excessive water use when it shows in the...
You brought up Mr. X-
I must have developed that just for you.
Mr. X-Metcom. So what happens is, water use, excessive water use, doesn't get identified by us until a month goes by. Customers don't often notice it. This will be much more immediate, much more real time. And customers come in and ask us to, if they correct the problem. What we typically do is, there are tiered levels. I'll just explain it shortly. There are three different tiered levels. It's a dollar something for the first gallon, for the first 0 to 5,000 gallons, from 5,000 to 20,000. I think it's $3 and some odd cents. So if there's excessive use and they've done the repair, we assess them the lower tier to give them a break, because we didn't notify them until a month later. We hope to not have to do that anymore. It's only fair.
Right.
It's only fair.
Any other questions on wells before we move on to sewers? All right.
Sounds good. All right. We'll move on to sewer.
And water is easy. We pay our debt off using capital contribution charges. We haven't changed the water capital contribution charge in six years. This is the sixth year. Water's easy. Sewer's the tough one. Sewer's the tough one.
All right. So on to sewer. Again, similar to water, we're continuing our proactive renewal and rehabilitation projects, including INI. So that's to help stop stormwater from entering the sewer system and causing us to have to treat that water as well. We are maintaining the Forest Run Wastewater Pump Station construction funding. That's the project that will eventually serve the YMCA, along with all the development you guys are seeing pop up down in the Great Mills Road area. We're continuing our vehicle and equipment replacement, similar to the water. And our, again, replacement of generators. We have expanded on the St. Clement Shores service area, as George spoke about earlier. That project will help extend the sewer and upgrade existing, our existing facilities that we have down there that'll serve the additional customers. We're hoping to connect once the treatment plant is complete. And our last large pump station project is the Piney Point, or Piney Point Pump Station and Booster Station. Those are both funded. That will upgrade that pump station down in Piney Point to better serve that community and create some more additional EDUs in that area. Additionally, we are working on the replacement of the force main that runs from Piney Point all the way up to Great Mills Road. The first few sections should go out to bid this summer, I hope. And then we'll see where we're at after that and what phases need to come after. And that's all I have. Do you guys have any-
And to preemptively answer your question, Commissioner Van Kirk, on the first page on the rehabilitation and replacement, you see a lot of yellow. Those are the changes from last year. One of the projects, the Spring Valley project, is shown in yellow because the project's not necessary. It was identified as an issue because the slope is flat, but we televised it, and there's absolutely no issues with the line. So we just removed the project. The second one, Piney Point Road Force Main Replacement, the cost of that has increased. We applied for Bay Restoration Funding. We were eligible. We made it all the way through the eligibility, but we didn't have enough points in the end. Never assume that you're going to get a grant when you're doing capital budgeting. I did it for the first time. I assumed we were gonna get $3.5 million, because we were told by the state we were eligible. The state's usually pretty good, but we didn't get enough points, whatever that means. So we had to re-insert the $3.5 million, because our budget assumed it. Never assume a grant. Always give the happy news when you get the grant. Don't give the unhappy news when you have to infuse your budget with $3.5 million. Lesson learned, even at my age, you know, that happens. We were just so sure we were going to get the funding. Another project, the Piney Point Booster Pump, instead of doing an internal budget amendment in a public hearing, we just decided to move the money from this project that wasn't needed to another project that was. So in this case, we moved 1.65 million, and we reallocated it to Forest Run. And you'll see that yellow on another page. The deferral of the SHA project, we told you about that. We increased our INI efforts, as Kristi talked about, by only $100,000 a year. And the updated estimates on this first page was on, let's see, Southampton, and I think it was 88,000 higher, insignificant in the scheme of this budget. But we do look at all the estimates every year. On the second page, with pump stations, updated estimate for the Piney Point Wastewater Pump Station and the reallocation from Piney Point is highlighted. And on the final page, again, continuance of the vehicle replacement program, and as we talked earlier, beginning the phase funding for the expansion of the public sewer extensions into St. Clement Shores. And as we talked earlier, beginning the phase funding, uh, for the expansion of the public sewer extensions into St. Clement Shores. Fifteen million dollars to extend the sewers and over twenty million for the treatment facility for three hundred and twenty. So you can do the math. I'd write those down because every time you hear about it, that's how much it costs. That's how much it costs.
Hasn't Piney Point over the years not have any additional E D U's? Is this gonna help what you're doing down there? Cause it's.
That's a tricky question, only because as we know, there's the, um, oh, what is that document called? Is ninety two oh one, the resolution? I don't know why I know the number, nothing anymore. Um, so there's areas within the Pine, Piney Point Town Center, I think it's called. Um, there is growth allowed in that area, but outside of that area, so Tall Timbers, um, Airdale Road, those areas are restricted still. And, and still will be once this pump station is upgraded.
Unless you're failing.
Right. Based on that resolution, along with the E P A funding that was done to, to put that project in.
Those federal things provided years ago and they will only fix a specific problem. So although there is capacity, the problem that was fixed were the failed, failed systems. So only those people that existed at the time could connect. Uh, it's not for undeveloped property. It's been so long. What we're trying to look at now is if the debt has been paid. Does that, can that be rescinded or can that, can that, uh, go away? Because we do have capacity in the line, but it's not intended for development.
Yeah, I remember that coming up over the last few years and I just was checking to see if this upgrade would help more people that wasn't already connected.
Unfortunately, not, not outside of that, that area.
How about that line that I hear every year? I know you guys have brought it up. I think Chairman Thompson had brought it up a couple of times. The line going from Great Mills Road down two forty nine used to be, was paid for by the government or?
That's the one.
That's the one.
That's the one.
Same one.
Okay. And you're, you're redoing that now or no?
No, not that.
Nothing with that?
Portions of it. Not the whole thing. We're replacing portions.
But that still doesn't help either. It's still.
No, unfortunately it doesn't.
Okay.
We, we, we were wondering maybe if we replace the whole thing, does that mean it doesn't count anymore? But no, no.
Could you replace the whole thing or is there still a ownership issue?
I think it's still an ownership issue. Plus it's, would be very expensive to.
Well, sure, sure. How's, um, how's Southampton coming?
Good. Phase one should be going out to bid very soon. It's with the county procurement department. They're looking over all the bid. It's all done. Um, so hopefully within the next couple of months, that should, phase one should be going out to bid. And then phase two, I believe is two years behind it.
Is there only two phases? Is that?
There's two Metcom phases, three county phases.
Okay. You'll finish yours in two?
We're gonna, yes, sir. We don't have, we don't have any work we need to do in phase three.
Okay.
And you talked about growth. We, we assume eighty nine E D U's, new E D U's for water each year and a hundred and forty seven for sewer each year. That has stayed flat for the last five. The county usually assumes a two percent growth. Our customer growth is about one percent. From an operating budget standpoint, I assume flat. Uh, and as a result of that, our rates are only going up two point seven percent for sewer, two point one percent for water. And for your average residential customer, which hopefully all of you are, you should see about a dollar seventy three per month increase. And I hate to say that's all or only because for some people, a dollar seventy three is significant for others. It's not. But you'll only see about a dollar seventy three as a result of this year's operating budget. So we held it pretty tight this year.
Yeah. What's the capital contribution now for like a homeowner? If I build a house on my lot and wanted to connect to both water and sewer?
Nineteen thousand eight eighty, ten thousand nine hundred fifty six for, um, water and eighty nine twenty four for sewer. Uh, that's nineteen thousand eight eighty. If you compare that to Leonardtown, that's twenty four thousand. You compare it to Calvert, theirs is twenty four thousand. If you look at our six year debt, you won't see a twenty four thousand capital contribution charge till twenty thirty one. So I think we're in good shape there, but it's, it's a lot of money for a new lot. It's, it's a lot of money.
Cheaper than a well. Like twenty four, twenty, twenty five?
We've heard some store.
Yeah, we've had some customers.
Yeah, twenty five thousand now is, is, is a well. So it's.
It used to be, it used to be, um, Leonardtown has had to do a lot of upgrades, but there was, there's always a comparison. What is Leonardtown doing? Why are they booming? Well, it's those capital contribution charges. It's not. It's not. Theirs is twenty four and ours is nineteen and it's, it's not. It's the fact that they're pro-growth and the county has eighty six to eighty seven percent of its jurisdiction as no planned service for water and sewer. Doesn't mean no growth, but usually a lot of growth follows water and sewer.
And so with you attempting to hopefully have that discussion one day to buy some land to expand into no growth areas. You're hoping that one day there'll be growth.
It's not about growth?
In the no service planned areas. I mean, not growth.
Growth at all.
I mean, service.
Yeah, it's about customers, but that's the byproduct of addressing failing systems. Other than pump and haul and holding tanks, there is no other way and pump and haul is not cheap. And when you get areas like all of Golden Beach, that's, that's a lot of people and a lot of votes. And that's, I don't mean that facetiously. It's a lot of people. We're talking five, over five thousand people in these areas. Oh, sorry, five thousand properties. Big difference. So it's times two point six for number of people, right?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Actually, I have a question about the, uh, E D U's that you were talking about that, that they're gonna be, I guess, similar to a T D R where they're transferable, kinda sorta.
Kinda sorta, yeah, good way to relate it.
Um, so in the areas, say of like Piney Point in that area, if there are some available and there's a property that doesn't have an assigned E D U. Would that be where someone would look at getting one?
You have to keep what you are zoned to have. What we don't wanna do is shortchange anybody. Um, so I think, I think you still have to keep one.
I don't think it's necessarily how you're zoned though, like it's measured by the current use.
By the current use.
Okay.
To serve your current use. That's right.
But then back to that one, as, they have to be kept within the areas that are allowed to be served under those weird agreements that we just talked about. So you can't transfer one to an area that's not allowed to have another one.
So if you go to the Wacomiko Shores Treatment Plant and, and Patricia goes to the Marley Taylor, those can't exchange E D U's. If you're both in the same sewer shed, then you can.
Okay.
Then you can.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the clarification.
No problem.
Yeah, the, the reasoning there was we didn't want someone outside of the area to chew up capacity. When they're not even served by that plant.
Absolutely.
We just felt that was not the way to go.
Sure.
So the, the S O P specifically states the sewer shed, not sewer service area, the sewer shed, the treatment shed. Very important to make that distinction.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much.
No problem.
Always an informative update and we certainly happy to see you.
Call anytime.
All right.
We have to make a motion.
Yes, I, there's, it's on the, it's on the, um, I'm just making sure there wasn't nothing else.
Okay.
You had the sample motion on?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. We will take a motion.
Okay. I move that the Planning Commission accepted twenty, F Y twenty twenty six through F Y twenty thirty one. St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission Capital Improvement Plan and Budget as being consistent with the comprehensive plan. And not, and that the chair be authorized to sign a letter to the commissioners of St. Mary's County confirming these findings and recommending approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second and discussion. All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Um, Lynn?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I also vote aye. Motion passes.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Robrecht.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. I'm not gonna do your last name again. Thank you, Planning Commission. And if you don't mind, we'll stay for, uh, the balance.
All right, moving, and everybody okay? We'll need a break or nothing?
No.
Okay, moving right along.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you an update on the St. Mary's twenty fifty, charting our tomorrow comprehensive plan update process. Um, I'm Leanne King, Director at Clearing Associates, head of the consultant team that's, um, assisting the county in the update to the comprehensive plan. So let me make sure my technology works here. Yes, okay. So, um, what I'll be sharing with you today is quick update on where we are in the project timeline. Uh, tell you a little bit about some of the key planning things we've learned from our stakeholder interviews. The majority of what I'm gonna share is really focusing on the public engagement, though what we call C E W number one or Community Engagement Window Number One. Uh, the meetings that were conducted, the online engagement, and then the results from that. And then, um, at the end, I'll provide for you, um, what we're recommending is the, a planned framework moving forward. So starting to think about how this document's gonna be structured. We haven't started drafting it yet, but we have put some thought into kind of how we're gonna organize it. So I'll share that draft with you tonight as well. Um, so looking at our timeline, we are, um, really tonight wrapping up the, um, second phase, establish vision and goals. Um, this meeting kind of marks the end of that phase and so we're already starting work on the next phase, which is the third, develop policies and strategies. Um, the, we have two engagement windows as part of that and that is really the kind of key phase where we are, um, working, um, in earnest to develop the actual plan and bring that before you for review. Um, and again, our, um, timeline takes us through early twenty twenty six with public hearing and adoption targeted for kind of early next year as our, as our, um, timeline that we're focusing on. Okay, so as you might recall, um, last year, last fall, we did some kickoff meetings. We met with, um, you all as well as commissioners, um, county departmental leaders. We met with, um, Mr. Erickson Metcom, um, St. Mary's County Public Schools, uh, Naspax River Health Department. So a lot of different, um, entities that are very important in the, the running of, um, the community here in terms of services and facilities, um, and leadership. And so, um, what I'm gonna share with you are just some kind of high overarching themes that came from that. There was a lot of great detail that was provided during those interviews and we have all of that to kind of reflect on and look at while we're developing the actual plan itself. Tonight, I'm just gonna be sharing a couple of themes for you. So, um, first and foremost, I think strong appreciation and desire to preserve the county's rural agricultural landscape and views. So that's a very important component of what we heard. Alongside that, protecting vulnerable coastal wetland and other natural areas from development. Um, and that very much seems to be in line with the policy direction that you have in your currently established comprehensive plan. Um, this third bullet here, balancing land use that supports redevelopment and development in, in the growth areas that are identified, um, within the comprehensive plan. While protecting the county's rural heritage. So again, kind of seems to be tracking with the policy guidance that's there. I think what we're hearing through stakeholder interviews and through the public engagement is more refinement to pieces of that framework. But that the overarching framework seems to be working well. Um, related to this balanced land use, I think is also the infrastructure piece as well that we heard during those interviews and that you all were talking about tonight and thinking about, you know, where those services are provided. There's actually kind of a, um, looking at private, um, package plant systems. That's one of the questions that we ask the public about. So I'll have some updates on that here in just a moment. Um, strong interest in more options for walking and biking to destinations and on trails. I think that we're seeing that across the country in all the communities where we work. People are very interested in having active open space opportunities like that. Um, more and improved public transportation options within the county and to outside destinations. Some of those are your employers that are looking to help provide that. Um, but, and also just relieving congestion in certain corridors within the county. Um, improving the county's roadway network and addressing safety and traffic issues also important. I think those two somewhat go hand in hand. The need for more affordable and attainable housing for people at different stages in their life. And providing a wider array of housing options, particularly within growth areas. Um, thinking about critical employees, um, and others that might, um, others in the workforce that might need housing within the county. And then action to address the need for better and expanded wastewater treatment options in certain areas of the county, a lot of which you were just talking about earlier. So that's something we're definitely gonna be looking at as part of this effort.
Before you move on.
Yep.
Go back to the need for affordable housing. Um, I've asked this question several times. Give me the definition of affordable and workforce.
Sure. So I, I don't think we have a hard definition here, generally speaking, in communities that may not have defined that. And correct me if I'm wrong, folks, if we have a defined affordable housing definition, the comprehensive plan that I'm missing, but I don't think we do.
Not currently.
Yeah. So typically it's defined.
I thought it was based upon income.
Yes. That's typically what's done is the, um, U S Department of Housing and Urban Development has, um, different, for different communities. So it looks with the income within each of those communities and then you have specific, what they call area median income, um, that it's based off of. So typically speaking, um, this is generalized. I have not, um, looked at this specifically for, um, St. Mary's County. But generally speaking, in a community like yours, um, where you've got, you know, um, you have, um, higher priced housing than maybe some of the surrounding areas. It's typically in the, it could start as low as sixty, but typically it's eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. So if you think about whatever your median income is, which I believe is around seventy thousand, it might be higher than that. I forget off the top of my head. Um, it would be kind of eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of that is kind of the median, the, the, excuse me, the income level that is generally targeted for what we call affordable housing or workforce housing. Yeah. And there are lower tiers as well, but in most communities, um, you know, the, the lower tier, the kind of very low and low income housing cohorts. The housing for those, um, members of the community is kind of dealt with in a different way, typically through publicly subsidized housing. That's not what we're necessarily talking about here. This is much more kind of akin to folks that are typically starting out. So if you think about young professionals, we heard this a lot when we talk with folks on base, that some of their younger engineers and whatnot, that they wanna be recruiting to the area. They have problems finding housing that will fit their income, um, you know, coming right out of school with student loan debt, et cetera. And so that's kind of, those are kind of some of the folks that we consider when we're thinking about workforce.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So moving along to Community Engagement Window Number One. Um, this engagement window was really focused on gathering information from residents that, um, to help us understand what the vision and goals for this planning effort should be. So this was conducted between January sixteenth and March third, almost a two month window. There were twelve visioning sessions. Um, ten were in person, two were virtual. Um, there was also a period of a month, February third to March third, where all of the activities were available online to folks as well. There were, um, two, um, questions that were, um, conducted in small groups, giving each, the folks at the tables a chance to communicate with each other. Um, there was a survey and then there were two mapping activities. So I'm gonna give you kind of the, the summary of that. Um, and the project website, as you see listed there, has the specific dates and times for all of those, um, visioning sessions that were held. In terms of outreach and how they were, that was shared, um, the county's website was frequently updated. Um, that was through, um, kind of the main webpage as well as Luggum's homepage and driving people to the project website. Um, periodic news releases were submitted to make sure that people were aware of the opportunity to engage at these various visioning sessions. Um, there's a community engagement team that's been established and those are members of the community that, um, have access to different homeowners association networks. You know, local, um, civic organizations, other groups that they can kind of help spread the word with. And so they help boost, um, notifications, particularly on social media and other, um, email opportunities.
Does the project website track the number of, um, views?
Um, that's a good question. It's on the, it's hosted on the county's website. So all the analytics that would be available for the, I guess, other portions of the county's website would be available for this one.
We are tracking those, um, how many views and clicks.
You can tell that on, on that s- specific site?
Yes, for, for our project website.
Okay, thank you.
And then there were flyers that were, um, hung up at various places throughout the county as well to help publicize the event. So total number of participants, two hundred and eighty eight. This is, um, common that we get more folks actually doing it online than we do in person. This is just kind of, and this was even before the pandemic. That's what we saw in most communities. Um, so the in-person is great. Not everybody likes to do online, but a lot of people do prefer the convenience of doing it. So it was almost half and half here, which is, um, is good. We had, you had a lot of good in-person, um, attendance at the meetings. So, um, as we mentioned to you when we did our kickoff meeting with you, we, um, look at, um, this, these two objectives to kind of measure ourselves and our, um, engagement activities and how well we did. So we look at engagement satisfaction and we look at representative engagement. So in. So in looking at, and there are exit questionnaires that people, both at the in-person meetings and those that were participating online, answered. It's voluntary, so not everybody answered every exit questionnaire. We do track the specifics of who answered what, how many responses we got. But generally speaking, most people responded to the exit questionnaire to give us some good feedback. So in terms of satisfaction, we asked folks how likely they were to participate in future events, and ninety-three percent were either very, very likely, very likely, or somewhat likely to participate in future events. Seven percent were not likely to participate. This also includes the online folks, so they may, that might be their way of saying, you know, we do this from home, we're not going to go to your events. That's just how we prefer to participate. In terms of their comfort, sharing ideas and opinions, people were comfortable. Nobody said that they were uncomfortable sharing their opinions or ideas as part of the engagement activity. So that's, that's good to see. In terms of representation, we asked several different questions, looking at a couple socio-demographics. You can see here, the green is the 2023 census data for St. Mary's County, and the blue are the survey respondents, so we can compare what that representation looks like. So this is also very common that we see in most communities that we work in. It kind of skews towards the older cohort, age cohort within the community. So we had kind of an over-representation of folks forty-five and up, a little bit between thirty-five and forty-four, and an under-representation of those kind of younger folks up through age thirty-four. So that is something that we want to be thinking about for the next rounds of engagement. How do we engage some of those younger members of the population to make sure that we're hearing from them as well? In terms of race and ethnicity, we have in the next slide. On race, you're actually pretty good in terms of representation, slightly overrepresented for white and slightly under for black or African-American, but pretty much on par for the rest of them. And then in terms of Hispanic origin, it was actually a little bit higher. So sixty, six percent of county residents identify as Hispanic Latino, and nine percent of the survey respondents said that they were, they identified in that manner. So a little bit of an over-representation there. In terms of primary residents, we asked folks what zip code they lived within. And so sixteen of the twenty-seven zip codes within the county were represented. And you can see on the continuing, the bar chart there, the ones that had kind of more responses versus the ones that had fewer. There were two zip codes that were outside the county, and those are folks that don't live in the county but work in the county that participated in the engagement activities. So we did some, several kind of map activities. This one is one we like to do called Where Do You Live, Where Do You Work? We use this to kind of get people, one, oriented to the geography of the county, and then also get an understanding of where people actually live and work. The zip codes help, but this kind of provides a little bit more of a graphic representation of where people were coming from. And so the red is where folks' residences were, and the green are the places that they were employed. So you can see a lot of clustering on the green, particularly around the base in Leonardtown. The red is a little bit more kind of peppered throughout the county. So that's, that's a little bit about who we heard from and where they live. So now we're going to get into the results from the survey questions. So I'm going to walk through each of the eleven questions here to give you kind of an overview of what those results were. So for question one, we got high proportion, ninety-one percent of folks agreed or strongly agreed that land use in St. Mary's County should be balanced with protection of rural areas and growth in growth areas. So that's kind of similar to what I was sharing before, that your framework for growth management in the county seems, you know, people seem pretty confident in that framework. Not that there aren't going to be changes as part of this process, but we think generally speaking, there's strong support for continuing that framework. Question two, seventy-eight percent either agreed or strongly agreed that development districts and town centers should be the focus for new development and redevelopment. And I'll talk a little bit in a moment about some of the maps, where we ask people if there are other places they'd like to see development. And there's, there are some locations for that, but generally speaking, it sounds like most people agree that the growth areas, the development districts and town centers are the right place for that growth to be happening. Eighty-four percent either agreed or strongly agreed that village centers should support small-scale businesses and tourism and serve as local shopping centers for the rural residents. Question four, seventy-seven percent either agreed or strongly agreed that new infrastructure, that could be water-related, water sewer roads, is needed to support development and growth areas. So there's an awareness and acknowledgement of the need for more infrastructure or improvement to existing. Question five, sixty-three percent either agreed or strongly agreed that packaged sewer treatment plants should be considered for wastewater services in areas with failing septic. And this is along the lines of what you were talking, just talking about in terms of needing to provide some level of service to these areas where there's failing septic systems in place or could be occurring within the future. So this starts to bring an awareness of that issue to the community for those that aren't experiencing this or live near it, and there seems to be support for that. The sixth question, seventy-seven percent of participants either agreed or strongly agreed that the county could use more options for walking and biking. So again, that kind of interest in having some more recreational opportunities. Seven, seventy-six percent of participants either agreed or strongly agreed, and we ask a couple of different questions here related to housing, that providing, this first one, seventy-six percent agreed, providing smaller homes and townhomes in growth areas particularly is an important solution to ensure that young families, professionals, and critical employees can find housing. Question eight focuses on multifamily housing for kind of the same, and sixty-six percent of folks either agreed or strongly agreed that that was appropriate. And then question nine, there was not consensus on providing manufactured or mobile homes in growth areas as a good solution for increasing housing choice. So thirty-five percent agreed, forty-one percent disagreed or strongly disagreed, and twenty-two percent were neutral. And we break it down just because that provides us some good guidance and kind of not, when you lump everything together, it's harder. You get more kind of direct feedback when you separate them out that way. And then question ten, nearly all, ninety-three percent of participants either agreed or strongly agreed that sensitive natural resources should be protected from development impacts. So continuing those policy guidance from the plan is important, and looking at ways to further those protections. The final survey question looked at public spending priorities. So we like to ask this to get a sense from folks, like, how do they want their tax dollars to be prioritized within the community? And what folks said was generally speaking, public schools, what we call public safety or EMS, fire, sheriff services, and road improvements were the top three spending priorities, with land preservation coming in fourth after that. Several respondents added their own ideas under the other category. We gave them kind of an open-ended, if they wanted to plug in some other idea. Public transportation and libraries were some of the other categories that were listed within those priority options. So that, we had two mapping activities, and we got a couple of maps for each of these that I'll walk you through. So the first map activity was Where to Grow. And as you can see, there were four different colored dots that folks at the in-person meetings were given. Folks doing it online had the same four dots, they just plugged them in on a virtual map. So the green dots reflect areas that folks thought were in need of redevelopment or investment to improve character safety or quality of development. Red dots show areas of change within a planning category that would be less intensive. So they want to kind of reduce the amount of intensity in that area in terms of development. The kind of dark blue purple dot is a recommended change to another planning area category that would become more intensive. So these are places people feel like should be more intense than they are today. And then that lighter blue represents areas where folks felt that there was water, wastewater infrastructure investment needed to either support future development or alleviate problems with failing well and septic systems. So you can see there's a variety of dots listed there. What we learned, and this is kind of the, the summary bullets here go, also go for the next couple of slides. Generally speaking, most folks agreed that expanding water and sewer service to certain areas was important, and prioritizing redevelopment, and thinking about kind of how, as you're a maturing community and you have older aging areas, that you want to be prioritizing redevelopment of those areas as opposed to new growth in new areas. And then there was kind of mixed feedback in terms of areas to be adding growth or reducing growth development potential in the future. This is the, so this, sorry, let me go back. This first map here was used for the visioning sessions, January sixteenth through the eighteenth. And then this second map was from January twenty-second through the following month, February twenty-second. So same color dots, same areas. You can see a lot more dots on this one because it was a, more visioning sessions plugged in there. And then this is a, the online dots that were included. And how we're going to use this information, because there's a lot of detail here. What we're going to be doing is, as we work through the recommendations for changes to the future land use map, we want to be evaluating both kind of service areas that are in place and some of the improvements that you all were just hearing about, but also the detailed feedback that we got from members of the community about how they might want to see things dealt with in a different way moving forward. And so we'll do that kind of geography by geography, looking at each area and what the themes are from the engagement feedback that we received. The second mapping activity was called Getting Around, so it was focused on transportation in a couple of different ways. The red dots on this map identify places that respondents thought were experiencing safety or high congestion issues that need to be addressed. The green areas were opportunities for more biking, walking trails, sidewalks that people would like to see, and the blue dots were locations that could benefit from expanded public transit service. Commonly held concern that there's road safety issues in certain corridors and key intersections, and then shared desires for new biking, walking trails, and increased public transit. So this was the map, again, used for the first two days of the visioning sessions. And then we've got a second map that was for January twenty-second to February twenty-second, that you see a little bit more kind of feedback located on. And then the online map for those as well. And this can help us in, again, thinking about the transportation policies that are going to be included within the plan, but also thinking about future land use as it relates to transportation, because they have an important nexus. And thinking about how you design and develop your communities, you want to be thinking about the transportation modes that are available to serve those areas. I'll just pause there. That's the kind of summary of the feedback that we got from the first round of engagement before I jump into the recommended plan framework. Do you have any questions for me? Did I take any of those? Yeah, yeah, it's what you expected to see, yeah. So our recommended plan framework, one of the things that we talked about, particularly with the stakeholders that we interviewed, was that we want to try to make the new plan an easier read, accessible, easy to find information, and easy for property owners to kind of understand what applies to their property and what's the guidance for their land. So that's, that's a big part of kind of our thinking in terms of the plan framework that we're sharing with you today. We also have been looking at plans in other parts of the state and making sure that we're going to be consistent with kind of state statute, that sort of thing as well, to make sure all of the I's are dotted and T's are crossed. So our plan framework has three main components here. The first portion of the plan, we would call the introduction. We might come up with a flashier title than that, but essentially it's the introduction to the plan. It will have information about the plan, what a comprehensive plan is, speak to the state statute. It will talk about the key planning influences that were identified during this process that really kind of drove the policy direction and the changes to the plan from the currently adopted plan. Some instruction about how to use the plan, we'll have a glossary of terms, and then the upfront summary of the plan monitoring process, so how the county will be monitoring implementation over time. The second recommended component of the plan framework really sets the policy section together. So there would be an introduction, and then there would be three main components. The first would be guiding our growth through 2050. That would be all of the kind of land development-focused pieces. Secondly, protecting our environmental and agricultural resources, so the policies that are more associated with those issues. And then third, serving our community, so thinking about public facilities and services and the guidance there. So each of those would have goals, policies, and actions specific to the variety of planning topics that we deal with in a comprehensive plan. And I have another slide here in just a moment that I'll show that detail. And then third is the implementation section. So there would be an overview of that, some guidance about monitoring and updating the plan over time, and then the specific action plan for the to-dos that the county would be undertaking to implement the plan over time. So in that second section, that's the policy section that was broken out into three categories, these are three sections, those are, that's what's listed here. You can see at the top, again, guiding our growth through 2050, protecting our environmental and agricultural resources, and then serving our community. And then with each of those policy sections, you would have a variety of topical information that would be included there, and the policy, goals and policies and actions related to each of those topics. So the first section would include the future land use map. It would talk about development capacity, growth management element, the growth and water sewer service areas, development regulations, and natural hazards vulnerability and resiliency, and thinking about kind of guiding our growth with respect to those vulnerable areas and hazards. The second section, we're recommending that it include all of the kind of environmental and agricultural protection components of the plan. So water resources, sensitive areas, element areas of critical state concern, priority preservation areas, and working lands. Mineral resources and fisheries could potentially be included in there as well. That's another element that's often included in county plans. And then the third section, again, focusing on serving the communities. The first one, government and community facilities element, transportation, housing, public health and human services. And then we've got development regulations listed there, we'll probably just go in the first section. And then the possible community renewal element is another option that we're taking a look at right now.
I think the current comp plan has like twelve or thirteen elements listed. This is just breaking out three main categories of elements.
That's right.
And then putting subs underneath them or something?
Yeah, kind of grouping it, so if you're wanting to focus, if you really want to kind of understand what are the infrastructure kind of policies within this community, you would go into that serving our community element. If you're wanting to focus on kind of environmental protection, agricultural preservation, you would go to the second section. And another thing that we typically try to do, we're actually working on it right now, is we're pulling all of the various policies that are listed in your currently adopted plan into, we're kind of building a database and that we're using as our kind of platform or framework for starting drafting of the plan, what's on the books today. And that will be looked at to make sure that it's in keeping with the guidance that we're getting from the community today about how you want to move forward. But one of the other things that we try to do is for geographically specific policies, we try to include that in the future land use descriptions. So they're not peppered throughout the document. You can actually go to the category for that future land use category, and it will tell you exactly what the policy guidance is with respect to that specific category, as opposed to having to look multiple places for that.
One quick question. I know this is broken down with like more elements, or however you want to categorize them. The last one had, well, the current one that we have now has like growth areas, town centers, development districts, broken out with specific rules in them. Is it still going to have a category for that, or are they going to fall into?
So we can definitely keep the growth areas framework as well. And we actually haven't had discussions with staff yet about whether or not we want to maintain both of those. You know, effectively, your future land use gets rolled up into those growth categories. But I think it's working well, is what we're hearing from the public. They understand kind of those different growth category designations, the development districts, the town centers, et cetera. So that's likely to be carried forward and be, would be included in that section one. And we could include, again, kind of the policy guidance that maintain, is, you know, that we want to carry forward or modify as needed in this process for those different distinctions.
The only reason I thought that was nice to use, because if we were looking at a project that was being done wherever, a town center, a village center, a development district, we would look at the zoning ordinance, of course, but we could also just look in there and see if there's any specific things that we missed in a whole chapter, because they were like bullet items, have to have this, you should do this, you should do this, you should do this, so. I would think that's a good.
Yep, thing to be carrying forward, yes.
I would think, my opinion would be.
A good tool for you all to have.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, so that's very much what we're starting off with. This is, in a large part, what I'm sharing with you is really just kind of the restructuring starting point of what you already have. Yeah, so that's very much what we're starting off with. This is, in a large part, what I'm sharing with you is really just kind of the restructuring starting point of what you already have. That's what we're going to start off as kind of our home base, so to speak, or the, you know, the foundation work on this. And then what we'll be doing in phase, or community engagement window number two, is starting to ask some more targeted questions about the places where maybe we don't have consensus about how we might want to be moving forward, or we need some more thorough kind of feedback from the community about what direction we want to go, so that we can then make sure that the policy direction that's included in the plan is lining up with their guidance and your guidance.
So I have one question. Though there really are no surprises in the report, it's, it's a pretty canned report, you know, based on other communities in Maryland. In your experience, how have you encouraged more participation? Because these numbers, to me, participation numbers are pretty low. And I know you've done this before, so what, what have you used in the past to encourage?
We were just talking about that today. So I think one of the things we're going to do is we're going to try to be publicizing the dates earlier. We're also going to be taking a different tack to go to events where people are already attending, so that we're going to go where the people are. So thinking about going to farmers' markets, different festivals and activities that are going on with your community to get feedback from folks. We're also in this, the first engagement window, there's a lot of questions to ask. The second engagement window, we're going to be more targeted, so it will be an easier ask for people to participate. We're going to have a fewer, we'll have fewer questions for them to be able to respond to. And we can also engage them in a way where if they have, you know, five, ten minutes, that's all they'll have to commit. It's not going to have to be an hour and a half meeting that they have to attend, or, you know, go through all of the online engagement. So some of this is just the, kind of the natural progression of engagement. I think that it's, I think the numbers that you have are good, but we do want to be improving upon them. And I think with taking this slightly different tact with this next round of engagement, we will pick up more folks. And maybe get some of those younger, maybe even like families, you know, maybe in the kind of the thirty-something, twenty, late twenty, early thirty-somethings, because they'll probably be at a lot of these events where it's harder for them to get out to a public meeting or find time in their busy days with kids and work to do the online.
I think with the older, older communities, some people are a little resident to, resistant to go online. So, you know, for a more personal outreach, I don't know if it would be mail, mailings to homes. I don't know. I just prevail to you. What, what have you done in the past?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We typically have, we have found that going to what we call, we call them public intercept events. So it's basically like, they're not coming to interface with us, but we're kind of asking them while they're at the event that they, you know, voluntarily are attending, hey, will you spend a little bit of time? This is about the future of your community. It's important to get your feedback. So that, that can be very, very successful. And we've seen a lot of other counties in particular have great success with that.
Have you had any luck at like, at other places, like county fairs, probably our biggest get-together of people? And they're not there to answer questions and stuff, but you may get quite a few that would answer a question or something like that. The Oyster Festival, you know, we have a lot of, those two events are probably the biggest in the county.
Yeah, I think that makes.
And like, I don't, I don't know how it would be done, you know, I mean, because the county already has a table or a booth at the, at the fair. So I'm not sure if there would, could be something in addition that would just gather a little bit more of.
Information.
Information, input.
And we, I don't know off the top of my head how that lines up with the, the framework for, or the, excuse me, the calendar for doing the public engagement. That's, that's part of the challenge too, is we have to kind of stop it at some point to be able to analyze the results, so.
They're late in the year, yeah.
Yeah, so it could be that we're using that, if it lines up with the third round of engagement, it could be that we're kind of drumming up interest for them to take a look at the draft plan. It might be in the plan unveil round of engagement, so that's a possibility that we can definitely take a look at. I know several folks on Lugam staff were looking at the different events that are happening in the spring and early summer, which is when we're targeting for the next round of engagement. And there do seem to be a number of different community events going on during those nice weather months. So, yeah, so we'll try to take advantage of those.
Which feels like you're going to be bumping up into vacation time. So, you know, I just, we, what's the next, maybe I missed it. What's the next window, time-wise? Have you established those parameters?
So we're looking at probably May to June. So it would start before the school calendar ended. Most of, most of the window would be kind of before schools end, which is typically what we try to, we don't want to go too far into the summer because it does get trickier with vacations. So there will be some kind of vacation, you know, overlap potential. But there's also online engagement that people can, you know, and people don't go on vacation for the entire summer usually. So hopefully we can pick them up at some of these different events that are going on. Or the other discussion was having some different open house formats at different places where people could come and drop in. Again, don't have to come for like an hour and a half. They could come for twenty, thirty minutes on their way to pick up a library book or drop one off, that sort of thing, and engage.
Has there been any thought of any kind of signage? I'm thinking that the community parks, you know, soccer's real big and stuff like that, baseball, opening day, where they could scan a QR code, something along those lines, you know, at the local recreational parks.
We were talking about that soccer season. I think we'll be kind of, you know, we'll be hitting that window. And so having, and we can definitely have a QR code for the surveys. And again, we're trying to make these very simple for folks that don't have a lot of time, so that they can do it kind of quickly but provide meaningful feedback into the process. So that was something that was also discussed as well.
Youth soccer season starts this Saturday, so.
Okay. It's coming up. And it lasts for a couple of months, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yep, yep.
I do want to applaud the way this survey went. I was, I was intending, well, yeah, I was probably the one that was like, what do I do with these dots? But I, you know, I was kind of dreading attending because I thought, oh, we're just going to listen to, see a bunch of slides and, you know, it's probably stuff I've already heard. Wasted my time. And I got in there and it was so interactive that it was, it was enjoyable.
Good.
It really was. So I, I really liked the way that you conducted that and the mechanism and the tools, rather than somebody getting up there and talking for fifty, sixty minutes. And how much do you really hear of what's being said?
Well, I don't want to take all the credit because I think Jessica Andritz and her team had a lot to do with the approach to the meetings and thinking through it. Yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
What I'd like to know is, is this information you've presented tonight, is it for us only, or can it be shared?
Oh, yes. And there, well, well, this PowerPoint will definitely, can definitely be shared as well. There's going to be an online report. So we use a tool called publicinput.com that is what captured all the online and also the, the paper surveys got plugged into that. So we have one database for all of the information. And that creates reports that we can share more detailed feedback on some of the questions.
Because I'd like to share this.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be available in the future.
And what else can we do as a community to help you? Where?
Spreading the word, yeah. Yeah, I think with the next round of engagement too, and I think you all probably received emails about the first round of engagement and those dates that were happening. So that, that's maybe something to, for the second round of engagement, if you want to share with your network of people that you know that care about the future of the county, you know, that you can help spread the word to those folks.
So. Events going on through, you know, beginning May first through the end of June right now is, is what we're targeting, is that next round of, of engagement. If you all know of activities and events where the public is going to be, please let us know. You know, we, we're only as good as, you know, what we're told and what we can Google. So if you all have some places and dates where, you know, we can set up a, a table, that would be very helpful, certainly. The other question that had been asked, can this information be shared out? Absolutely. And tomorrow morning, because LeAnn was unable to attend tomorrow morning, I will be making a shorter presentation to the commissioners. But all of the presentations that are being made tonight and tomorrow, as well as all of the data that was collected, the actual, you know, typed in entries or handwritten entries that were then typed into the system, will be available on the project website. So everyone that is interested can go to the project website to get that information. There is a place, I think we're putting it on Get Involved. That's one of the, the tabs in the project website. And so we're working with IT to publish all of those reports that summarizes the information, but also provides individual detail as to every single comment and question that, that was answered. So all of that will be available to the public. It's probably going to take us another few days. We want to make sure that the formatting and the layout of, of the reports that are, that are generated look okay when you pull them up. The last thing that I will say about the public intercepts and scanning QR codes and things like that. So one of the things that we noticed through this first round of engagement was even though the technology was available, it still felt clunky. You were waiting for the pages to load. It was difficult to see on your screen if, you know, if you have a handheld device like a phone. It, it makes it difficult to see. And so one of the things that we talked about today in our meeting, we're passing out more paper, you know, surveys, just, you know, a one-page, maybe color-coded with, with a couple of themed questions where people could just fill in a couple of the blanks. Those, that information could be scanned in to the system and the data captured that way. So it's less clunky for folks to, to give us the feedback. So I hope that information was helpful.
Yep, thank you.
Laura, did you have something you wanted to add about? Yeah, we're not in any public testimony or no oaths or nothing. I don't think it would hurt anything if you had something to say.
I think if you reached out to the.
Come up to a microphone if you would.
If you, well, I mean, or, you know, reach to them rather than have, have them come to you. Go to their, go to their after hours or something, you know, to get the, your development community. Also, the engineers and people like me that work in the system all the time. You could get a lot of input from us if we had, I don't know, a little works, a little conversation where you specifically set it up for us. I think you would. I think you'd get a lot of input, just, you know, the typical users of the system. Because it's, it is about our neighborhoods. It's about our community. But the ones that are creating a lot of those communities are us. Try, you know, of what's fit, what works, what doesn't work, or what, you know, opportunities might be there.
Where things get a little bit tricky, and maybe John can speak to that, is the Open Meetings Act. And so because the information is, is being received, we have to be very careful about going out and, and dealing with small individual groups. I don't know, John, if you can maybe give a little bit more on that. But there's something that we do have to be, be mindful of.
Meetings, if we get more in a quorum of you at any given place, we'd have to advertise that ahead of time, make it open to the public. If it's just the comp plan consultant or staff, though, not a public meeting of the planning commission would have to be advertised ahead of time. It is a staff meeting that would have to be accessible to the public. That's a little meh. But things like that can usually be surmounted in the wash.
And we did it the last go-around. In 2010, we did it.
Yeah, we did.
We bet, you, the staff.
Y'all came in, yeah, they did.
Engineers and consultants, you know, we've been, I've been making notes for years, you know, different things that, you know, the file that I create when certain things don't work, or I keep hearing it from engineers telling me why they can't do something. You know, I just try to keep notes of it. But I think you might get some, you might get more interest from them because I think they felt like Patty felt. I'm not going to waste my time, you know what I mean? That, I'm just telling you the way I think a lot of people think. And where if it was specific to them, I think you'd get a roomful of people. And I believe, was it, I'm not sure if it was, but it wasn't that long ago. It wasn't the comp plan, the 2010 comp plan. But it was some, one of the plans, and they actually had a meeting in here for, it was with staff, though. And it was for our input on something major plan.
Probably Election Park.
But maybe it was Election Park Development District, yeah. But I think, I, I think it might benefit. And I also wanted to ask the question of, is there going to be a part in this structure that you're going to allow people to give you specific requests that somebody might have?
So I think that the, the second round of community engagement is intended to be kind of targeted and specific questions. I mean, we, we could talk about having an open-ended if people wanted to kind of share additional insights. And we usually try to provide some level of open-ended for that. But the intention is to kind of, as we were describing, make it very simple and easy for folks to participate within a short block of time. But I think that, I mean, there's always the opportunity to share information throughout the process if anybody at any point has an interest.
If somebody wanted to write a letter or whatever.
You don't have to, I don't think you would necessarily have to do that within one of the engagement windows necessarily.
And then Laura, at, at the end of the process, if all else fails, you've got by law, public hearings before the planning commission and before the commissioners do at the very end.
Right, but then, but why, but if.
If it's something that kind of fits in a category, if it fits in a, you know, and it's something you're working on, why not bring it up then? Why not, if, if it's something that, that looks like it, it's a goal, why wait till the end to do it?
Absolutely. And I, and I will say, during the first round of engagement, we, we did have some open-ended questions. Was there anything that wasn't touched on during, you know, the questions, the survey and the mapping activities that, that should have been touched upon? And so I, I think we're looking to kind of keep that theme throughout. If there's something that's being missed, then, then folks would have the opportunity to add that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. But I, I do think a lot of times when questions are structured, and I, I agree with you. I think they should be short and concise and to the point, but lots of times when questions are structured, it limits how people answer it. I mean, you can make, you can ask the question and get the answer you're looking for. Or you can ask the question and get what they're thinking, you know. So I think, follow-up with Laura, I think we need to make sure we always provide enough time for the community to say what's on their mind, because people want to be heard.
Thank you.
But they don't want to take the time.
Yeah, it's, it's a balancing act, right? It's a balancing act.
Well, that's their job.
That's their job. Great. Other questions?
Can I, I'll ask a question. It seems like with the planning commission, we have developments that come to us, town centers. And nobody has parking. They can't, there's two for one garage or something that's going to affect and the width of fire trucks getting in and out of town, houses and all that, emergency vehicles. I know that's not part of the comprehensive plan, but we also run into that quite a bit because that does give the quality of life. If you only have one car that you can put in a garage and you got a four-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand dollar townhouse or condo, and you can't park on the street, you got to go down reserved areas and stuff like that. Where does those codes, or who comes up with those codes?
I can answer that question. So once we're done with the comprehensive plan of what's the overall vision for the county, you, you all know that, that day in and day out, you're looking at that comprehensive zoning ordinance. Those, that, that is the place where those types of things can and, and need to be addressed. So that's what comes after all of this.
All of this.
That's correct.
Okay, part of Laura's question, I was also the chair of a metcom for a number of years, and we had issues with tying in different sewer systems because there was no standard. And metcom met with all the engineers, they met with all the haulers, they plumbers, and they set it up with review, with staff. It was nothing that had to be announced that we were going to have a full-blown meeting. It was not a public hearing. It was the iron out to engineering and designing. Those engineers that are out here are the ones that's going to have to implement everything that we pass to them. that we pass to them. So to Laura's point, I would like to have staff meet with, and Laura, you can get your engineers together, because not all of them will come to a meeting, but they will complain afterwards, okay? And that's typical of a human being. So I would like for you to try to entertain that with Laura, especially the engineers, that's what their degree is. They know how to work it. We want to see the vision for the county, we know where we want to go with it, but they're the ones that are going to have to design it after the plan, like you were saying.
Rubber meets the road.
And that's, the rubber meets the road. And that's where it comes back to us, and we go, huh, two-foot sidewalk, who's going to walk on that, it's not handicap accessible? I know that's an extreme, but that's what we're running into here.
I just want, one question. It may not be the right place for it, but I'm going to follow up on, on Tony's question. Back to that parking, because that really is one of my pet peeves. Is there anything?
That's all I brought it up.
I don't know. Is there, is there anything, Jessica, that, it's good to see you here at a meeting tonight, thank you. Is there anything that we could, is there anything they can do in the meantime so that our hands aren't so tied?
If you're talking about the zoning ordinance, I mean, it is, it is there, there's no, I hate to say the M-word, there's no moratorium right now on how the zoning could, could be changed. So if that's something that, that needs to be looked into, I heard it, the deputy county attorney heard it, that's something that, that we could certainly discuss, is, is an amendment that would take into, to consideration that, that feedback.
I mean, it feels like there's a lot of development coming right now, and I'm wondering if it's happening before we go into...
It's a recurrent issue, and I mean, God knows, we've seen it enough. And, look, under current law, you can deviate upwards or downwards. Downwards fairly easily, you just need a letter of justification. More parking, the way our ordinance is set up right now, you'd have to go to a variance, so that's potentially one more step. So that's what we got right now without changes. The planning commission thinks it's worth it, and we're all on the same board, at least to have a discussion, maybe it is time to just have a little bit of a work session after a planning commission meeting, saying how do we want to change it, and talk about approaching the commissioners of St. Mary's County with a suggested text amendment, if that's what... Okay, I'm counting at least, I think, four heads nodding, so maybe we'll take that as our marching orders and work on bringing something to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any questions? All right, well, thank you guys very much, very informative.
Thank you.
Anybody have any new business or anything that needs to be talked about?
I have one thing. Tomorrow is a very important day. It is the founding of the state of Maryland, and we're going to be celebrating Maryland Day down at the museum. And there'll be taxi rides free of charge by, from the county, and it'll take you out to our beautiful island where Maryland was founded. And the lighthouse will be open and will be available to the public, so come see how great their island looks and the changes that's going to take place. So come attend Maryland Day, it starts tomorrow from 10 to 2. Ceremony's at 2:00. They'll have the passing of the gifts with the different native tribes. It's very, very entertaining, so I would like to see the public come and participate and see how the founding fathers and what they did. There's also going to be a mass on the island dedicating Father Andrew White, the first settling there, so...
At 10:00?
The mass is at 10:00. So, that's just a public service.
All right. Nothing else? Instead, take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[music]